Like to call the order, City Council Meeting for May 13th, 2024. Please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Anderson?
Here.
Baldwin?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Gardner?
There.
Lindsay?
Here.
Stanton? It's not yet here. White?
Here.
Mayor Stanton will be approximately 10 minutes late, so you won't have to bear with me for too long. Apologize for that. Since Mayor is not here, I will not make comments for her. Do we have city manager comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pro tem. I just want to thank everybody that participated in the the community build for the Village Square Playground last week. Some folks gave, you know, three full days, others, you know, gave what they could, but there was a lot of hard work out there. The the community build actually finished a few hours ahead of schedule, so the crews worked really hard. And then the work continues. The Sinclair Recreation Folk Fair back out today, continuing their work on kind of the tightening things up, and then the additional pieces that kind of fall within their purview to install. And certainly, our Department of Public Works crew is continuing a lot of work with with sand and then mulch that's pending and additional items that are needed to kind of put everything back together and beautify that that portion of the park. So really wanted to just thank everybody for coming out and for their help to build the playground.
Volunteer effort was definitely commendable. I agree. I agree. Okay, moving on to item six, I guess it takes us any agenda changes, additions or deletions? No, I don't believe we have any guest speakers on our agenda this evening that will take us to public comment on agenda items only. Please approach the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Comment on agenda items only. Please, Mr. Fox.
Dan Fox, Sogatuck, City Sogatuck. It relates to Agenda Item 15C, the intersection.
I'm Sarah.
What did I do?
Oh, sorry, I was just letting you know the time.
Oh. Oh, I have no doubt that there are time watchers somewhere.
Just to help you out.
Thank you. Just a quick comment or two on that. If you, and I don't expect you to now, but if you looked at the map on page 136 in your in your packet, which shows the intersection basically drawn from above. The idea that I'd like to at least offer for your consideration would be to route the trail in a fashion which, if you were coming south on Blue Star Highway, in front of it, you've got the Sogatuck sign on your right. Instead of crossing directly south, you take a right-hand turn and you go about 80, my estimate, about 80 yards to the north on Lake Street, where there is an existing crosswalk. Minus minor detour for some advantages, I think. First of all, safety. Instead of crossing at the three-lane-wide intersection where you have traffic approaching conceivably from about four or five different directions, and every mother knows, even though tell the kids to watch the light, you also tell them, look over your shoulder, look left, look right, look. At the existing crossing, you only look two ways, left and right. It's well removed from that that potentially dangerous intersection, so there's a safety advantage there. It's also a significant cost advantage if you don't do those stoplights at that corner, because you could have an on-demand stoplight at that existing crossing. So that you pull up there, you got a bike, push the button, red lights go off, off you go. So instead of a 400, whatever the number is, 250, 400,000, I have all sorts of numbers, that on-demand stoplight would save a little money. It also would add additional benefits, including no traffic delays when there are no cyclists around, which is most of the year, let's be honest. I mean, the winter time, whatever. So you'd, it would be controlled to when there are cyclists there and not when they're not. And finally, cyclists in the busy times wouldn't back up en masse at the intersection, because they'd be crossing farther down and be able to cross with a red light that they activate and so forth. Again, I think I made comments similar to this at the at the Parks and Public Works meeting several weeks ago. I didn't. I wanted everybody to have benefit of this, so there you go.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
Appreciate you speaking. Anyone else in the audience? Please.
Richard Donovan, Douglas. I'm pinching tonight for Nancy Kimball, who is away, as the anchors say on TV. First of all, thank you all for your service, for all you do. Secondly, thank you for your support of the Blue Star Trail. This is like my third iteration of the City Council working on the trail, and I can tell you with, we've spoken to hundreds, literally, of people over the years about the trail, both residents of the city and tourists and people in the surrounding communities that are visitors in the city regularly, like myself. And everybody is very supportive of the trail. I shouldn't say everybody. A vast majority are very supportive of the trail. And in particular, about the traffic signal, which I know is one of the things on your agenda. I was actually surprised that in all the people we've talked to over the years, I would say 95% of them were in favor of a traffic signal at Lake Street, and many of them actually said that it was overdue. In reaction to some of Mr. Fox's comments, well, I'm just hearing for the first time, I would just say, you know, we're relying on the engineers who are professionals and whose job it is to determine what is the safest way to deal with that intersection, right? And the city's engineers, police and vendor bank have reviewed the plans, I am told. And so we have the benefit of two engineering firms telling us what's the best way to do this. I know there, earlier on, there was consideration of using the existing crosswalk, which is, as Mr. Fox said, down a little bit. But the preference was the plan that that is before you. Also, I just note that it's pretty clear to everyone, this is a seasonal traffic light, right? So in the off-season, it's not going to be red and green, it's going to be blinking, just like the one out here. So you're not going to get traffic delays due to that light from what the experts have told us. Thank you. I'll be here if you have any further questions when you get to that item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Anyone else in the audience care to speak on agenda items only tonight? No? Anyone online? Deputy clerk? Okay. Oh, just in time.
Saved by the mayor.
Yes.
Where are we?
Just got through public comment and we're on to consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you all. I was at my son's baseball game. We were ahead 12 to nothing. So I was able to leap. Okay, so let me go to, ah, let's see. The consent agenda. Ryan, do you want to talk about this? There's quite a few things on here, but many things that we've gone over, and they're just kind of a repeat from previous special events.
Yeah, certainly, Madam Mayor. I can kind of just kind of read the items, maybe just kind of hit a couple highlights if you'd like?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So on your consent agenda this evening, there's approval of the regular meeting minutes of April 22nd, 2024. Approval of a special event, the Free Fitness Series. I'm understanding that this is a reoccurring event that that's occurred in prior years at Wick's Park. Special event approval of the Community Pride Car Parade. And after our meeting this morning, I did follow up with the the event planner, and this is kind of a continuing parade of cars. It's it's not like a going to be a constant street closure. It's just going to be kind of a parade of cars through town. They're going to have volunteers at each intersection, just kind of holding traffic just for a brief period of time as cars come through, so it won't be prolonged street closures that are needed. Right-of-way signage, banner requests, jump into summer from the SCA. Social District application from the Butler Pantry to add them to the Social District. A Pride Month proclamation, which is similar to a previous year's proclamation. City Hall Concrete and Stormwork, this is kind of a little bit of an increase in price from the originally quoted amount. Maybe Mr. Herbert here that can kind of touch on the reasons for that. If you have questions. Change order number four for 2023 street improvements related to some price increases as a result of work on North Park Streets. Revocable License Agreement for Seating in the Right-of-Way for Charlie's Round-the-Corner Ice Cream. This is for dining in the streets. Setting the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget public hearing for June 10 at 7:00 PM. We had a pretty extensive work session where we went over the budget, so this would be setting a formal public hearing to gather public feedback more formally. And then the last item is a National Public Works Week proclamation. So next week is kind of a week that the National Public Works Association tries to celebrate and recognize our our public works employees across the country. And so for you this evening is a proclamation that would recognize the great work of our our public work staff. And if I can maybe take a moment on that, Mayor, I always say, I think, I mean, our public works staff literally touch everything and really touch your lives every single day. So from the time that you wake up in the morning and and maybe use the restroom and that waste goes somewhere to, you know, pouring or creating a pot of coffee that that needs clean water, flipping on a light switch and electricity comes in. You know, you head to work maybe for the day and you're driving on roads and you come home and you want to, you know, recreate. And so you're you're walking on the sidewalks, you're going down to the parks, and these are all things that your public works staff do day in and day out, that touch your lives every single day, and we can't do it without their great work. So this is a proclamation to kind of recognize their work.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Well, at this point, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for May 13th, 2024.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Do we have discussion?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say real quick. We have such a wonderful, wonderful staff at the DPW, and I can't believe how clean they keep our streets. And I hear it all the time from folks in town when I come out my front door and everybody walking around and saying how clean our town is. I don't think folks realize, you know, the small staff that we have that keeps these streets cleaned over the tens of thousands of people that come through this town every year. And is there any way we could maybe buy them lunch or do something a little special for them this week or next week?
Are there any things planned for the the week?
You know, something that we can.
Yes, with the with council's direction, we certainly can get with the treasurer and see if we can make sure and buy them at lunch at the very least next week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
See what we can do.
Any other comments on the consent agenda?
Good idea.
Great. All right.
I have one question. It's related to the free fitness event, which is super fun. Appreciate people involved in that. My question, I'm just like really technical on filling out the request. There's the banner under the Sogatuck Palace sign. The event is taking place over the next three months. And the wording on our thing might say like it could be up for that, those, those kind of, all those months. So.
That should be a correction.
Is that, is that something that we're doing? But it's also like filled out in a way that makes me unclear if they're actually requesting the banner sign. I can't find any kind of corroboration on whether the X in their box in their mind is meaning that they want it or not.
Good question, mate. I did contact the, I'm sorry, I did contact the, I contacted, I didn't, I couldn't, applicant. Yeah, I noticed. And and also, I didn't love that the the sign that they requested to put in the park was four by three. It seemed a little bit large on Friday night, so I contacted the event coordinator, asked if that sign be no more than, I think, what would, what did we say, 18 by?
More like a political sign.
Just the night before, and she's happy to comply with the signage request that we make, which is, that would be just that, and I wouldn't want the the banner that, I don't think it belongs on a palace sign for the whole summer either, yeah.
Yeah, so it would just be at the park.
Just at the park the day before, and it would be the smaller, like, political-sized sign.
Yeah, thank you for asking. We have the same questions this morning.
Good cut.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyone else? All right, Sarah, if you could call the.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. And on to staff reports, boards, commissions and committees, city managers report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the beginning of the meeting, I highlighted a big thank you to our Village Square Playground community builders. Otherwise, I have nothing in particular to add unless there's questions.
Are there any questions for Ryan? All right, on to the treasurer's report. Is Peter on?
I'm here.
Okay, does anyone have any, do you have anything you want to highlight, Peter, or does anyone have any questions?
I have no, I'll light if somebody has any questions.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
On to planning and zoning.
Nothing in particular to add, Madam Mayor, unless there's questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. All right, moving on to DPW, Scott? All right, anybody have any questions or anything for Scott? All right, we're just moving right along. Sheriff's Department.
Sergeant Haas is here tonight, Madam Mayor, so I think he's maybe has a couple.
Okay. Does Sarah have a question? Come on up.
There's an attorney here in case you need it.
Okay, I guess no one had any.
Good. Okay. Well, now that he's here, maybe I'll ask him a couple of questions. I told him, I told him, one thing I wanted to be prepared for, and he was, he was on it. But so unfortunately, the the sign at Howland and and Blue Star, Sogatuck sign was was struck again, so. Yeah, so maybe you could share a couple of details on what happened there and.
I don't have a ton of details because the state police actually went to handle it.
Okay.
So it sounds like it was hit and the driver fled from the scene from what I could read in the details. And then it's like they, the state police followed up with her the next evening, so.
Yeah. I don't think I can fix it again.
Pretty rough.
I've seen LaJoyce run up there and he said it doesn't look good, so.
Yeah, he hit the, he hit the main post.
Yeah.
I mean, I, after the Christmas time it got hit, I mean, I I did a terrible job fixing it. I don't think, even me with my still carpentry hand can, can, can bring the patient back this time. But I'm glad you're here, Sergeant. I think it probably would be beneficial for all of us to hear how things are going on Maple Street with enforcement and just people behaving themselves, hopefully.
I did include that in your guys'.
Yeah.
I don't know if that is helpful for you guys.
It was.
That kind of download stuff from the speed sign that is posted out there, and I'm gathering that from the one that's kind of posted halfway down the way there. Everything is, you know, it's right around that it's 23, 24 is the average speed. There's just, there's a lot of traffic, you know, it's almost 200 cars an hour at times.
Wow.
You know, you're averaging 2,000, over 2,000 cars a day in a road that's what probably used to maybe 100, maybe.
Right.
The road is in bad shape. I was over here last week and I know Scott and the DPW are doing what they can to keep the potholes filled, but the good thing is it slows people down a little.
That's, yeah.
It sure does.
But yeah, we're going to keep doing our enforcement out there and hopefully the end of July, they have that buttoned up and the citizens of Maple Street can get back to their quiet street.
Absolutely.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Anyone? Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Stanton. Thank you, Deputy Haas, for being here this evening, and I want to thank you too, because there's, initially when this first started, there were several emails from residents of Maple Street, which were forwarded on to you, and I appreciate your prompt response and just getting answers to the community as as they've been asking them, so thank you.
Very well.
Right, if there's nothing else, thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the engineers report. John?
I will follow suit since you've seen a lot of me recently, but we've got a few agenda items coming up. If there's any questions on those or others, happy to answer them.
Okay. All right, well, if you all want to wait for those topics, otherwise, if there's something else that you have any questions about? All right, John, thank you.
Great.
All right. All right, moving on to Fire District Administration Board, Dan Fox.
Thank you. Before I start, Sarah, Jamie was going to distribute tonight. You have her for, thank you. Those are the most recent, those are the April statistics, just a few comments on those, around some of them. April recorded 84 calls, which was another record high. And through the first three months of the year, we were up, also up 16 and 16%, and that's also a record. As you see, the the average response time is up a bit. A little more color on that. The response time, times for calls that are made from south of the old elegant Blue Star closure, those have increased to eight minutes, so it's a minute roughly, a minute longer. And response times, this doesn't really concern Sogatuck that much, but the township. Response times east of Old Elegant Road and Blue Star increased seven minutes and 47 seconds. So the chief's assessment on that is that overall, it's not too bad, so. Upcoming, our next fire board meeting, which is why I'm not reporting on a fire board meeting, is a week from today at 4:00 in the in the fire station, as always. You're always welcome. One tidbit of of new news, the I think you had this, but that the ambulance service, ALS, Advanced Life Support Service Contract Agreement, from running from the first of June to the end of the year, has been signed with Life EMS. So that come first of June will be enforced. The ambulance committee of the of the Fire District, together with the chief, are going to tour Life EMS's Grand Rapids campus, which is an impressive campus, this Friday morning. It includes a central support facility, a fleet readiness center for vehicles and whatnot, Innovation and Education Center, where they train EMTs, and an administration and conference center. If you haven't yet, and if you have the time, search Life EMS, Google search that, and you can read up on this resource, which is an amazing and truly wonderful resource. As I, I think you know, that's, it's owned by Mark Meyer of the M-E-I-J-E-R family, who was a a, an EMT in a two ambulance thing. They've got a picture on that website of him. You can see the bed in the background that he was sitting on and a card table that they were using back in the day when he started this thing. To this day, he retains his EMT license current, so an impressive guy, and it's a really impressive operation. And then finally, reiterating from the last time I was up here, 5:00 on the 17th of June will be the presentation of the Fire Board's coming fiscal year budget at the firehouse. You're all invited. The last time we did this last year was well received on by all three jurisdictions, so hope you can make it and but have yourself.
All right, anybody have any questions for Dan? Okay, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Interurban Board.
Um, yeah, after Memorial Day, you know, we'll be open till 11:00 on Friday and Saturdays, just so you all know. We'll be anticipating our, the expansion, the designs for the expansion of our building, giving us an extra bathroom and some more room, a break room as well. And we're excited to have Becky Carton-Frandell, as she's taking on her role as as the director. Phyllis will be with us until the first, and our next meeting is May 22nd.
Great. Any questions for Gregory? Okay, all right, moving on to Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority is Barry here. Nope, okay, we'll move on then to Cal Lake Harbor Authority.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals.
No meeting this month, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Historic District, Russ?
Yeah, thank you. We had a special meeting last Tuesday, which quite a few people that are in the audience tonight and probably online attended. The special meeting was in response to the city's application to approve the additional features at the playground in the Village Square. That motion, that motion passed five to one. The reason why it's five to one is because Nico Leo has stepped down from the board. He has moved to the township. So the Historic District Commission is seeking applications for the Historic District Commission. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June 6th.
Yeah, so far, I believe we have two applications for the Historic District, but that's still open for
Yep, absolutely.
a little bit of time. So people can still apply.
It's an exciting group.
Yeah, all right. Thank you so much. Any questions for Russ? Okay, Planning Commission.
Yeah, we meet Thursday evening, so I know we'll get an update on where we are with short-term rentals. We're still gathering data so that I don't, we won't be talking about data on Thursday. And then just, you know, regular Planning Commission stuff.
Okay. Any questions? All right, moving on to Parks and Public Works.
Nothing since we last met. We meet again at the end of the month.
All right, sounds good. And then Tri-Community Non-Motorized Trail.
We have item 15C under New Business. I won't get ahead of that. It's also the, something that we discussed at our Wednesday workshop, so I'm sure we'll cover it during 15C.
Okay, that sounds great. Request for payment none, approval of accounts payable. Do I have a motion to approve accounts payable?
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable presented at the amount of $171,269.49.
Do I have a second? All right, any discussion? Questions, concerns? All right, this is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
And White?
Yes.
All right, so no introduction of ordinances, no unfinished business, so we are on to New Business. Item 15A, Resolution 240513-A, Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Project Plan for Sogatuck Water Systems Improvements. It is on page 73 of your packet.
Sarah, would you be willing to pull up our poll point? Appreciate that.
Thanks, John.
I'm just going to be very brief, make a few introductory comments, and I'm going to turn it over to Peter and Elaine behind me, who did the heavy lifting on this. For those of you that were here in these seats last year, a year ago, we put together a application for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF program, which is focused on just what it sounds like, drinking water system. It was a comprehensive application that touched basically every piece of the city's drinking water system, from replacing the water mains in the streets to dealing with lead service lines, which is obviously a hot one. Some improvements at the wells and and some small improvements, at least at the reservoir. We, it was a historic year. One of the reasons we recommended that the city pursue it last year, it was a historic year for that program. They had more money in there from COVID relief and bipartisan bipartisan infrastructure law and other places all kind of hitting at the same time. Unfortunately, the that was matched by the amount of demand they got, and we scored well. In my opinion, we scored quite well. We got just about every point we could have short of if we had PFAS in our wells and things we wouldn't have wanted anyway. We scored 70 points, I believe, going from memory. I think the cutoff was 80 or 85, so we were, we were pretty close. This year has less money in the program, but still more than a normal year. We think it's worth just updating the application and and try again, see where we land. Again, this would be more of a comprehensive project to kind of pull off the Band-Aid, do all this at once. If we don't get funded again, the option on the table would be to start picking away at some of these things. We've already started launching some things on Maple Street that you'll hear at the workshop next time, so we can, we can start piecing out some of the highest of the high priorities, probably, is what it would be. The application goes in June 1. Part of the application is the public meeting process. They're going to walk through the, the, the slides are going to look, for those of you that were here last year, a lot the same as what they were last year. We tweaked the scope a little bit. We pulled out water main replacement on Park Street. Former council member Becken pointed out to me, because it was in his lifetime, that it was replaced. And he's, he's getting older, but not that old, so. We, we pulled out the water main on Park Street, the service replacement would still be in there. But the, that is mainly the the only difference in the scope of what we're, what we're applying for. So I'm going to turn it over to Elaine and Peter. Questions anytime at the end, in the middle, whenever they come to you.
Okay.
All right, thanks, John. Not quite as tall as you. So yeah, like John mentioned, the public meeting process is required as a part of the State Revolving Fund process. We want to make sure that council and members of the public have time to give their comments, ask questions about the project, since it would be ultimately financed by a loan and or principal forgiveness. So, uh, let's see, we have to touch on a couple of required items mentioned on the agenda there, but we'll just start with project background. So as you know, Michigan is kind of leading the way in the nation as far as requiring replacement of those lead and galvanized service lines by 2041, so that's a. replacement of those lead and galvanized service lines by twenty forty-one. So that's ahead of the nation, although the nation is now kind of following our lead, I'd say. So that's one item that we wanted to try to get funded. Some other ones were water mains that were built almost a century ago, in the early nineteen hundreds. Some of them are cast iron pipe. So they're pretty brittle. They're possibly undersized. Undersized mains can have an issue with firefighting capacity. So it's something that needs to get taken care of eventually. So those are kind of the main items that we were trying to wrap up into this kind of bigger project, try to get funding for. So some kind of more background information on the system. The Sagatuck system is part of the Cal Lake Sewer Water Authority Regional System. And there are about nine hundred and seven services here in Sagatuck. The Cal Lake system serves about two thousand six hundred and ninety-five. So about thirty-four percent of those are here in the city. Serves about eight hundred and sixty-five permanent residents. But as you know, it's kind of a population boom in the summer season. And there's almost double that here during the summer months. So starting right about now, probably, definitely after Labor or Memorial Day. So we wanted to make sure that we were looking at a system that will continue to serve current residents and any population growth for the next twenty years or so, since it's a twenty-year financing package. So the big kind of need for the project is mostly just taking care of those lead and galvanized service lines, replacing them with copper or plastic that meets current regulations, and then upsizing undersized old water main, getting rid of those cast iron pipes and putting in newer pipes. And then there's also a couple of small things to do at the reservoir overflow that's kind of jointly owned with other members of the Cal Lake Sewer Authority. Some stabilization of soil that needs to get done, and Peter's going to talk about that a little bit more. And then a few little items at wellhouse number five as well. So kind of objectives for the big DWSRF project include continuing to allow the city to provide safe drinking water for residents, replacing high priority items, critical infrastructure like those lead service lines and, and water main, complying with the Michigan lead and copper rule for those services, and minimizing costs to city residents. And then of course minimizing environmental impact during construction and also during operations. So we looked at four different alternatives. The first one is required by the state is looking at what happens if you don't do a project. The next alternative is kind of optimizing the existing system. If there's some kind of operations or non-capital project that you could do to optimize the current system. Alternative C, regionalization, which isn't really applicable because it's already a regional system. And then alternative D, the water system improvement. So going to turn it over to Peter. He's going to go through each alternative a little more in detail, but especially the recommended.
Thank you, Elaine. So alternative A, no action. This obviously means not doing the project we're proposing, which would not replace the failing assets in the system, would not meet our objectives, and would not comply with the Michigan lead and copper rule. Alternative B, optimization of the system, which would basically boil down to hiring more DPW staff and giving them all the latest and greatest tools to make their jobs as quick as possible. This would also not meet the project objectives. Regionalization of the system would also not meet the project objectives, but it was required to be reviewed by the SRF process, and your system is already regionalized with the Cal Lake system. And finally, the alternative D, the proposed water system improvements. We would replace lead service lines throughout the city, which would comply with the lead and copper rule. We would replace and upsize various sections of water main to improve fire flows throughout the system, improve water quality by getting rid of rusty water mains, and improve the reliability of the system by reducing potential water main breaks from the old mains. Replacing wellhouse five, that would improve the security around the assets inside the wellhouse because it's not totally secure right now. So it could be potential tampering, but a new wellhouse would provide security for that well. And then finally modifying the overflow at the reservoir. Right now, it's the, the city or the Cal Lake has to overflow the reservoir every year for state requirements, and the water that they flow is eroding the dune. So the alternative D is the only alternative that meets the project objectives, would replace approximately five hundred and thirty-eight lead service lines and about two miles of water main on the streets listed there. There is a map later on in this presentation. Sorry. At wellhouse number five, like I said, we would construct a new wellhouse building, which would secure the pumps inside. And there are also some electrical line improvements that are needed at the site because I think the, the electrical lines aren't buried as deep as they should be there. For modifying the reservoir overflow, we would extend the overflow pipe down the dune and potentially construct an infiltration basin for the water to seep into. Could also install some riprap or diffuser at the end of the pipe, just to kind of slow down the water as it's flowing down. And we would restore the natural topography of the dune. So kind of fill in that rut that's been eroding and ultimately prevent further erosion of the dune. And so the total project cost would be around sixteen million dollars. And there's the map of the proposed water main improvements. And as far as environmental impacts, we're not anticipating any negative long-term impacts from this project. Just your typical short-term construction impacts of dust and noise and traffic detours. There would be beneficial impacts from removing sources of lead from the drinking water and also beneficial impacts to the protected critical dunes by reducing the erosion. So what this means for the users of the water system, the city is not likely to qualify as an overburdened community due to your higher median annual household income. But you do have the potential for principal forgiveness or grant dollars with this application, which means you may still receive a low interest loan compared to the market rate. But we won't know the results of this until fall of this year. So in that table at the top there, the estimated increase to the base fee of the water bill, if you got no grant and all loan, would be about forty-seven dollars. And then if you were to get about seventy-five percent grant, twenty-five percent low, it would increase about twelve dollars per month for an average residential user. So then the schedule for this project going forward, we would submit this project plan and on June first of this year, we begin design early next year and finalize, submit application by March of next year, bidding in May, loan closing in August of twenty-five, and then hopefully begin construction of September next year and complete it hopefully within a year from then. Any questions?
So like John mentioned, we know that, you know, those user rates can be a little, little scary. It's a sixteen million dollar project. But the opportunity to potentially get grant funding or principal forgiveness exists this year, existed last year, but usually the state revolving loan is a loan program. That's why it's called a revolving loan. But because of the bipartisan infrastructure law, which they still have a couple of years of, which does allocate extra money to the program, there's a good opportunity to potentially get a, a grant component along with the low interest loan. So like Peter said, the state does their scoring. They develop a draft kind of project list with all the scoring, and then that gets finalized in October. So if you luck out and you get grant money and you can, you can move forward with it at that time. But if, you know, it doesn't look like you're going to get grant money or even loan money, like John said, you could parse it out and maybe do the lead service line project or pick a couple of streets that have water main and lead service line and kind of go through it that way. So I guess bottom line, don't let the forty-seven dollar per month increase kind of scare you. We recognize that that would be something that the city would want to look at, you know, once the funding list comes out. The other thing I want to mention is this is a public meeting required by the state. So for those in the audience, there's a sign-in sheet right next to the agendas on that table. Before you leave, if you could just sign your name or print your name there. You don't have to give your address, but if you, if you could give either an address or an email address, if you do have comments that we don't address tonight, that way we can get back with you. But we do have to submit that with the application on June first, just to make sure we dot all the i's and cross all the t's. So at this point, I'll take any questions from council.
Yeah, go ahead, Holly. So given, you know, potential rate increases, Sagatuck does have some low-income people who are on, you know, pretty tight funds. Are there, have other communities found some way to help those residents deal with bigger bills?
Um, it's something that's been discussed a lot at the state level and at the national level. There are bills out there in Lansing that haven't had a lot of movement, but there are some water affordability bills out there that have a lot of support in Lansing that they, they might try to push forward in the next year. But it's usually a local decision.
Do you know if any local communities have created any programs to help defray some of those costs?
Only ones I'm aware of are in Detroit area where they do have a fund. Do you have something to add to that?
I've run into communities too where they, they do like a fifty-five and older discount in their, in their rate structure. I think that's a little hard to administer, but that's one way they've tried to address that fixed income, because obviously the cost of living adjustments they're getting aren't going to be the same as what something like this is going to hit. Yeah. Again, I'm not sure exactly how that gets administered and proven, you know, who's, who's getting it and who's not, but that's, that's something I've seen.
Thanks. Any other questions? Go ahead.
So I'm taking this to mean that there's no line replacements at all on the other side of the river?
Yeah, if you could draw the map.
When you look at the.
Sarah, if you wouldn't mind putting the, yeah.
Putting it on the map. Slower. There you go.
What's, what the map is depicting, everything it read there is the public water main that's in the road getting replaced. The service lines would be throughout the entire system.
Okay. All right. So this is just the, okay.
The one, the one notable there, it's highlighted in purple, but the river crossing has been on Cal Lake's radar for a long time as a risk. We don't know that it's, it's ready to fail, but it's, it's certainly one that if it did fail, we wouldn't know about it right away, and it could drain the tower pretty quickly.
So, but all the service lines will still be replaced?
Service lines would be a, a system-wide.
And then when, I mean, we've always talked about that we had until twenty forty to replace these. I'm confused about why the.
It's January first of twenty forty-one is what it is. So essentially it's twenty forty.
But when you look at when they expect the construction to be done, it's like next year.
Yeah. So that would be, you know, if the city wants to move forward because a good funding package was available, like fifty percent.
All right. I was like, what am I talking about?
That would be part of that project. If, if funding doesn't come through, you know, you can definitely do your required five percent a year.
I understand. Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point. Just to clarify, this is kind of a, you know, maybe like a, a parallel path. This is a one funding mechanism. It's very aggressive, doing a huge massive project that, you know, ideally would be at a cheaper cost, at least if you were going to borrow the cost, if you, if we wanted to go that, that route. You know, the parallel path is really the, the asset management plan that, that, you know, you, you worked on last year and approved back in the fall that kind of talks about parsing it out like they, they had mentioned and, and talked about adding on a, a water infrastructure-related fee to our water bills. And soon, I think we're going to have that conversation and, and, you know, see which direction we want to go. Our, our neighbors in Douglas have, have already implemented that. Township's had that particular fee for quite some time. And so great if we get some funding. You know, I, last year was a lot of dollars spent putting this together, and there was very, it wasn't going to cost anywhere near as much to kind of throw our hat back in the ring. So I thought there was, you know, an opportunity to at least see how we do, especially because we did score well last year. But really, it's a parallel path.
Do you know, Ryan, if the board meeting for Cal Lake is open to the public, it's, I think you said it's the seventeenth. Didn't you tell us?
Yeah. So their, their meetings are open to the public, although they're a public body and, and kind of have the same rights that you do to go in a closed session for certain reasons. And so they do have a special meeting on the seventeenth to discuss kind of a, their first draft of the updated water agreement. So we've been kind of waiting to see that, that, that first draft from them based on the framework that the managers had previously provided. So they're going to discuss that on the seventeenth. I don't know, it says that they're going to be discussing with their attorney, but it doesn't say in the notice if they're planning on doing that in a closed session for a matter or not.
Thank you. Matt, did you have something?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for being here this evening. So we estimated about five hundred and thirty-eight lead pipes that potentially have to be replaced in, in the city. And I know Mr. Moxley has said in the past that it's, that's kind of a variable number because we don't know until they actually dig up the road. So, you know, if you do some math, or at least do some math here, we have to, you know, over fifteen years, if it's got to be done by January first of nineteen, or pardon me, of twenty forty-one, that's about thirty-five in a year. Now that's of course not going to break out on average like that, right? It's going to be coming in, in fits and starts. So we have a lot of work in front of us, just from a, and, you know, just from engineering and a construction standpoint. The thing that, that probably concerns me the most here is that, and really not even a concern, it's just more of an observation. And my experience with this is that, you know, I'm going to be very careful to make sure that we try not to increase taxes or have to bond out on this. Though interest, the low interest loan is of interest because that's certainly a fairly inexpensive financing, financing option for the city. We don't know enough yet to know what we really need to ask for from that program at this point until we get some more grant information. And again, based on experience, as Mr. Moxley knows, we don't, we score well, but we don't score as high as some other communities that might have some real specific needs. I don't have the financial flexibility that the city of Sagatuck has. So I, I'm, this is great. I love this information. I would also suggest as information becomes more available from a grant standpoint, that we have a special workshop on this specifically to discuss exactly all of the financial ramifications and the impact on our capital improvement plan as we get more information on this. And, and I think that this warrants that type of approach. I would also, I would also say that this, this definitely gets me thinking about where our priorities are from a financial standpoint. The city of Sagatuck has, has been financially responsible with its, with its tax dollars. And I really think this is the kind of thing where we have to think, okay, what's first? This is first, in my opinion, in terms of overall projects. So we have to make, and again, without thinking about raising taxes or bonding out if we don't need to, I think that's where we have to look at our financials and say, okay, where's the money going to come from for this, especially if we don't get grants? The MEUs will definitely contribute to this. But this, this just has me concerned from a financial standpoint of getting it done on time.
John, when it comes to scoring, are there things that are, make our community unique that could up our score that you're looking into that could help us?
We, we did go back and, and we looked at, couldn't we tweak some things? And we did that last fall as well because they, they give you a chance where they give you the preliminary scoring, and we tried to argue for some additional points. We just don't fit in the specific categories that they're get. One of, one of them always hits us is the medium income. We just don't get those points right off the bat. The other one is we're not replacing a well. We tried to argue that, you know, the improvements that we're doing at the wellhouse should get those points. And they, they, it was pretty clear in the, in the language. They, they are kind of set in what they can give us points for and what they came with.
Is there anything, I mean, given the, the tremendous jump in our population in, excuse me, in the summer and the number of short-term rentals we have in the city, it's over thirty. And, you know, you figure two people per home for a, a regular residence and short-term rentals probably in the six to eight, which puts a lot more pressure on our, our water. Anything we can use, any stats there we can use to make a stronger case?
Not, not really that's baked into the scoring system. I, I will say that there's kind of another funding program that we use a lot through the Department of Agriculture, Rural Development. And what they do is they look at what is, what are your user rates again compared to your median income? And in that case, having only, you know, nine hundred permanent customers would.
And in that case, having only, you know, nine hundred permanent customers would help us, I think, because you're dividing those costs amongst those nine hundred. So that would be another avenue we can we can look at. They have similar, you know, setup. It's it's potential for grant, subsidized interest loans, things like that. One other note on debt, I'm I'm a fairly debt averse person myself. Taking out a sixteen million dollar loan is scary. But also, the the thing I always coach my my clients on is that if we're taking that sixteen million dollars out at two or three percent versus construction costs, five to ten plus percent, you're still making money. I mean, you're still coming out way ahead, even though you're taking that big shot. So just one thing, you have to balance. It's it's a big, big thing to take on.
Any other? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm also sensitive to the question that was asked by Councilmember Anderson on, you know, people in town that may not necessarily be able to easily afford that additional monthly fee. There's there's, it sounds to me like it's a policy decision for the city to make in terms of whether we have relief for for citizens that may need it. We could certainly use federal poverty guidelines, which are used in my industry, healthcare for sliding scales and so forth, and that's pretty easy to manage. The other thing I would ask too is that, is this a uniform charge across accounts? So in other words, a commercial account, which presumably would be of increased use compared to residential account. The city, I'm assuming, has some ability to be able to set that based on some different parameters.
Correct, yeah, this would, what we presented here at least would be a kind of a ready to serve, like a fixed fee per residential equivalent. So if if you have a, you know, a two inch service, that's multiple times what a, you know, a normal residence.
Okay, so it's not going to be across, unless we choose to do that, it's not going to be across the board fee. We can, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so at this point, there is a motion.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have to take any questions that the public might have as part of this process.
Didn't know if you were doing that in writing or if you wanted to do it publicly.
Nope, we we need to do it right now before we close the public meeting and you vote on the resolution. So we will open it.
All right, if anyone in the audience could come to the podium and you state your name and where you live. And of course, it's on this topic only.
Hi, Diana Decker, one twenty eight Elizabeth. I have a question. Many years ago, I would always get my water bill quarterly and then it started coming monthly. And when I called, they said that that was for part, that's higher now every month for the infrastructure. So was that, anything Kalamazoo Lake and Sura was taking in any money previously for infrastructure for those lines?
So Cal, yeah, Cal Lake has some fees along those lines that, but the city itself isn't collecting any of those dollars.
Cal Lake has limited assets in the water system, but that's probably what that's for, maintaining their assets from the water system. Each community has its own assets and then the cattle authority assets as well.
Okay, I was just curious because that's what they said when we were getting quarterly bills and then all of a sudden it started going monthly and they said they were building up for infrastructure. So I didn't know if there was any money for, in there for that.
That that's separate from the assets that we.
Yeah, I have a building in the city of Douglas. So when I received my water bill one month, it was like I was using eight thousand gallons of water. And I'm like, no, I don't think so. And so I hired a Macatella Plumbing and then so on engineer. And they're saying, no, Diana, you don't have a leak anywhere, your bathroom's not leaking anything. Next bill I received from Kalamazoo Lake and Sura, it was saying I was using ten thousand gallons of water that month. So then the engineers came out, everybody met, because I'm like, where's my line? It was under the city of Sagatuck visitors' barrel. And when they opened it up, the dial was spinning and there was lead. So I paid, you know, I hired engineers and so on, so I paid personally eight thousand dollars to have the new lines. Yep, and so the city of Douglas has already started, you know, some of those special assessments on those streets. So, yeah, so it's very serious if something fails.
Anyone else in the audience? You can come to the podium. And can we take online comments? All right, if there's anyone online who would like to speak on this, please raise your hand. Okay, I think public comment is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we can go to the motion. If someone would like to make a motion, the sample motion again is on page seventy three.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution two four zero five one three dash A to adopt a final project planning document for water system improvements and designate unauthorized project representative.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion beyond what we've just talked about? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
and White?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to new business, item fifteen B, airport property proposal from the Outdoor Discovery Center. This is on page ninety four of your packet. Ryan, if you want to talk about that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so as you've discussed over a couple of work session meetings now, there's a, well, back up a little bit. So so last year, the the city did quite a bit of work in looking at it at the airport property. There was a phase one environmental assessment, ecological evaluation, sustainability evaluation. There was a proposed trail map that that was reviewed. There are planning sessions, including strengths, opportunities, aspirations and results. There was an evaluation of liability and ADA requirements. If you were to install kind of more rustic trails on the site and then an initial zoning inquiry with the township, it says property is located within the township. So from there, the Outdoor Discovery Center had kind of put together a proposal to install some, kind of formalize the trail system, also maintaining or, you know, keeping them more rustic and and more natural. Create a trailhead, create a parking area, combating invasive species and restoring some habitat and then potentially placing a conservation easement over a portion of the the property. And so a donor has has come forward with a willingness to pay for the the full proposal at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So during the last two workshop meetings, you you kind of discussed that proposal. It's your your last workshop meeting. You kind of took a look at where that that conservation easement may be and kind of that map that's on your screen there and red would kind of be the areas that are proposed for for conservation easement. They're more ravine like, the the topography is quite steep, be challenged to to, you know, build or develop them as it is. So question before you this evening is, is whether or not, you know, you want to move forward with the Outdoor Discovery Center proposal contingent upon actually receiving those dollars from the donor. If you do approve that this evening, then once we receive those dollars, we'll work with the Outdoor Discovery Center to, you know, sign off on the proposal and then kind of move those pieces forward and getting the necessary zoning approvals and implementing the plan.
Okay, at this point, there is a sample motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from the Outdoor Discovery Center for the airport property contingent upon receiving a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from donors and to authorize the interim city manager to apply for any necessary Sagatuck Township zoning approvals on behalf of the city and further authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign zoning application forms on behalf of the city as the owner.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion at this time?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm going to be a no on this motion and I would like to explain why. I've been pretty, pretty consistent in my my opinion about the airport property. I I do not believe this is a priority, it is not a park. The city has a number of projects within its city limits that are demanding attention from us in dollars. I think this will draw resources away from the city that should be used for projects within the city limits. The donation, I'm very grateful for someone who would like to donate a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to this project. Very grateful for that. However, the fact that the city does not have a donation policy to guide that donation process, as mentioned at the workshop, is of concern. The project, the donation does have strings attached. They require a conservation easement, which is in the packet, which in my opinion, if this is passed, will limit future council's ability to use and decide what is the best in future use for this property. So that easement, in my opinion, will devalue the property from a future use standpoint, both from a value as well as a use. I also believe firmly that a project, that an asset of the city that's north of a million dollars in value really should be decided by the voters of the community. And we should be able to come back to the voters and say, here are the best and highest use options for this property. Let us know what you'd like us to do with this. It could very well be do nothing with it because it's actually being conserved when nothing is being done to it. Two is someone may, that someone, the public may say, hold the property for for future value, for future value. We could certainly use the money for future projects. Three would be sell the property. There could be some people out there that may be interested in purchasing the property. Four may be the proposal to actually develop it into a park. I'm not saying this isn't the proposal that we should do, I'm just saying this is not the right time for us to do it. And with the conditions that are on the donation, I would I would gratefully decline it.
All right, anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I may, yeah. Just quickly, because we've been over this so many times, it's been going on for well over a year. We've had ample opportunity for public input, had a lot of sore analysis and all that. I'm not going to belabor all that point. The donation is very specific to this. It's not like we're taking funds that could be used somewhere else. We're applying it directly from the generous donation to the airport property, opening up to the public. It belongs to the public, give them an opportunity to look at that and see and see what the highest and best use is. Nothing is taken away from this. The conservation will go on an area that's already a ravine, our watershed. It's a small easement that should be there anyway, it's not buildable. It's it's really something that to protect our watershed, give our, give our public an opportunity to see this. Open it up, it's not asking too much, it's really just legitimizing trails that already exist and giving us an opportunity to see it. We've been over it with the DPW. It's basically the same as maintaining a Wollum Trail, which is negligible. Lot of endangered species out there, a lot of wonderful rustic areas that it'd be great for us to see. And a thriving, healthy community such as us does not sell green space, we protect our green space. And that's all I have to say for that. I respectfully ask for everyone to vote yes tonight.
Go ahead, Holly. Yeah, just a couple of quick points. What I like about this proposal, and we talked about it last week, last week, is it's a very light, contained use that I think really offers benefits to the residents in terms of recreation. So that's pretty cool. I do think having the the formal conservation easement's important, especially treating with some of the invasives. And I would argue that conserving that precious part of land could actually enhance the value of the property because it it keeps it there. And then, you know, we've talked, I know, Russ, you talked about this last time too, the best and highest use. That's really developed, I mean, if we decided to sell it to a developer or sell it for development, that's when you do that because the results of a best and highest use analysis is development. And I think the question we need to ask ourselves with the airport property is, do we want to sell it and do we want to monetize it? And or do we want to keep it as an asset for the city? And so, given that we know the value of the property, I don't, I think, I don't know why we would do a best and highest use unless council decided that we did want to sell it. So just a quick point on that.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, sure. I mean, you know, that property's been vacant for so long and has been sitting there for so long. And in fact, a lot of people didn't know where it was until we started talking about it about two years ago. Even folks that lived here for most of their lives didn't even know where it was. At first, when I thought, I I thought that too, I I came to the point where, what, what? Everybody talks about affordable housing, what a great place to put affordable housing, right? But, you know, the more, the more I thought about it, the more, you know, the more I put time thinking about it. I'm I'm very happy that we are getting some use out of it. And and also, you know, the aspect of conserving it, I think, is a great idea as well. I want to thank the group that's donating a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to do all of this. You know, I I don't think we should back those folks in the face. And one thing I always say in town is that if you've got a great idea, that's great, you know, for the city. Because lots of people have great ideas, but when you've got a check behind it, you know, then we can make great things happen in our small towns. I talked to the DPW at our our last workshop and I asked, you know, is that really going to be that big of a burden? Are we really going to have that much of an increase in maintaining in our own city expenses? And really don't see that. This is a natural trail, I'm sure there'll be some work to have to be done there. But I don't think it's that big of an expense. And and I don't think we're that tied into it. The zoning as it is makes it, what is it, what, the two acres each or something?
It's two and a half acre minimum, so.
So it's not going to be affordable housing, yeah.
We're talking about, you know, seven hundred thousand dollar houses, let's be honest.
And so only seventeen lot splits, so.
And and that many lots. So, you know, if you talk about housing, that's where the zoning is there right now for that. I I think it's a great thing to do with the property and 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 why not utilize it? We do have us that conservatory aspect of it, but we also have a great community of folks here that that is very important to, and folks that live here, that's very important to. So I absolutely support this.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, I'd like to commend the Parks and Public Works Committee for doing the initial study with ODC. We learned on Wednesday that, you know, from the ODC, that thanks to having done that study, that brought the donor forward. And additionally, I would of course like to thank the donor for their incredible generosity. And personally, I think you all know I'm a yes on this. If this does become an issue in terms of DPW staff, I I certainly hope DPW comes to us and asks for additional resources because I I do not want to overburden our DPW staff. And anything the team needs to to maintain this property, please bring it to council and we'll, we'll take that request very seriously.
Anyone else?
And just real quick, you know, you you think about future things. And what if this was to become a future park, you know, that 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 lasted, you know, through the decades? You know, you you see an opportunity to build like a clubhouse, a community, a community house there that could be rented by parties, by weddings, by our, and can be used as our community. So it's a beautiful area, so I say why not explore that?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I had an opportunity to talk with the family who's donating this money and it was actually their younger generation of the family that really wanted the conservation easement. So these are young people that were wanting a conservation easement. They wanted to make sure that the trees and the creek and the the habitat that's out there was protected. And that's what they wanted their money to go towards. They had a lot of projects presented to them, they had all sorts of ideas that were presented to them. And the whole conservation easement is what they were hoping for, to be able to protect that beautiful piece of property. But they also said, there's still a large portion of that property that we could develop. We could have a community center, we could have ball fields, we could have a soccer field. There's room there that we could have some things that gives us options down the road. But that's just the one portion of it that that they want us to conserve. And I think it's fair of them to ask and we appreciate their donation so much.
The the portion that they're they're talking about, it's not the whole hundred and seventy acres, right?
Not the whole.
About how how big is that portion?
So there's a map of it that shows the conservation easement.
Yeah.
It's the ravine, the watershed.
By the way, yep, on my reports.
So you can see.
I think Councilmember Muncy's question is how many acres does this represent?
I'm not exactly sure on the acreage.
But but that that map shows that it's actually most of that property, right? Or?
If you hike it, that's the ravine and the watershed, that's the creek, that's, it's the drop off of that.
If you look at the contour lines, particularly to the right side of the red conservation, it it's, it goes down to a to a part of the Kalamazoo water.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, those contour lines, it's quite.
And back to the other side. It's a steep valley all the way around.
It's not really, it's not buildable, I mean, it's.
Right.
Yeah. Yep.
But there's a huge section there, I I'm seeing it there.
Yeah, right.
We still have options with the flat section.
Yeah. Will we have an opportunity to thank the donor at some point?
Yeah, I I'll follow up with them and certainly kind of, I don't know what their desire is.
Write a note to anonymous, but it is such a generous donation, it would be nice for us to find a way to thank them.
All right, if there's nothing further, if the clerk could please call the rule.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. Moving on to item fifteen C, intersection improvements at Lake and Blue Star for the multi model trail. And that's on page one thirty four. Is that right? I believe so, okay.
Madam Mayor, we reviewed this at your your workshop meeting. Just as a refresher, last year you approved a general services agreement with the engineering firm C two A E to design a. last year you approved a general services agreement with he, with the engineering firm C two A E to uh, design improvements to this intersection. That involved uh, some slight movement of the, the pallet sign as well as uh, uh, engineering design for a traffic signal at this, this intersection. So as a result of looking at, at different options, for, looking at different options for the intersection with the Parks and Public Works Committee, the, the layout that's before you is, is uh, what the recommendation is. It involves moving the, the pallet sign four point eight feet. Uh, so a slight movement, uh, kind of re- landscaping around the area with very natural landscaping and, and uh, or natural stones and that sort of thing, which will provide some, a little bit more room for the uh, the, the Blue Star Trail. Uh, and then also installing a uh, traffic signal at this intersection consistent with the rendering that actually your engineering firm Fleece and Vanderbrink had put together several years ago when they were initially helping with the, uh, evaluation of this uh, project. So, as we discussed at your workshop, the other improvements for the intersection are, are things that C two A E has indicated, you know, could be paid for by the, the, the grant dollars, the TAP grant and the DNR grant that, that's been obtained. But the traffic signal is not something that's funded by the, the current grant dollars. Uh, but there is another grant opportunity that has um, popped up recently. Thanks to one of your PPW committee members actually forwarded it on. Uh, and we took a look and, and, and uh, participated in the uh, the webinar C two A E did. And so this is actually a really good candidate aligned. You know, our, this project aligns well with the goals. So, traffic signals unfunded currently, you know, with grant dollars. Uh, as you know from your budget proposal or budget presentation, we're going to plan, you know, that, that the city would, would pay for it, the hopes that we'll maybe have grant dollars here if you approve us moving forward with that application this evening. And then, you know, once we get to the point of getting, you know, bids back and taking a look at that final good hard costs, then, then there'll be another opportunity for you to make a final decision at that point. But uh, just to reiterate from your, your work session, a couple of different studies of, of this intersection support, you know, that Fleece and Vanderbrink indicated that, you know, you, you could potentially look at a traffic signal, given the traffic warrants and a, and a trail going through this area. And then the um, study by the Aligan County Road Commission, uh, the more recent study did recommend a traffic signal indicating that the traffic warrants supported it. Uh, and then kind of noted, hey, especially considering a, a trail coming through this intersection, that, that a signal is warranted here.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Lake Blue Star intersection improvement plans, including pallet sign movement and landscaping consistent with the design, installation of a traffic signal, consistent with the renderings, the use of up to five thousand dollars in contingency funds in the C two A E general services agreement to apply for grants to fund the traffic signal installation and to authorize the interim city manager to apply on behalf of the city to the Historic District Commission for the improvements and further authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the application form on behalf of the city as the owner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion at this time?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm a, I'm a yes on this motion. However, um, I do want to challenge the city council and um, those that are working on this to um, look at other alternatives and, and, and this would be something probably to talk with engineers about too, is that, you know, I've heard several figures, two hundred thousand dollars being the minimum in terms of that traffic light signal. Which for something that's going to be used, really needed for just several months a year, seems like a lot of money to me. And, and I just wonder if there's other alternatives to a full-on traffic signal for that. Grant wise, great. But um, again, based on some of the conversation we've had this evening about Sagatuck's eligibility and getting of grants, don't know how likely that's going to be. Again, I just get back to the, some of the financial um, commitments that the city's going to have in terms of this water system and so forth. That two hundred thousand or more is going to come at the expense of that. And um, I, I just, and I'm all for safety there. I ride through that intersection constantly on my bike. So I know the traffic patterns. I know the difficulty of turning there and so forth. Bless you. I'm just really struggling with two hundred plus thousand dollars for traffic control there. And I just, I would challenge us to find maybe some other solutions and maybe this is the only solution.
Sarah, would you mind going to page one, to the renderings, just so people can just get an idea of what we're looking at? One forty is where the traffic light is, but so page one thirty-nine and one thirty-eight is where you see the um, trail and the pallet sign. I think, I think everybody would love to see that visual. We've seen it many times because we've been working on this. But um, for those who haven't really seen what this will look like, this is just a rendering. It's not the final, but this is what um, you know, why a traffic light, you can kind of see where that, where that would come into play.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Again, I would challenge us to find more possible, maybe less expensive solutions to this, to this um, situation. I'd be curious to see if there's other alternatives. And maybe those have all been explored through the process. This is the only proposal I've seen. So.
Uh, anyone else?
Do you have any idea what that alternative could be or might be, or you're just looking?
Yeah, I'm not a traffic engineer, just.
Right. I, neither am I. I'm just wondering if you had any ideas.
I don't.
Cause I'm trying to think of what would be better, you know?
I mean, one alternative was mentioned by Mr. Fox this evening, and I've heard that from others about moving it down towards the crosswalks that, that's already there. I don't know how feasible that is. I just um, again, from a financial, from a financial situation, two hundred plus thousand dollars for traffic lights.
So, if I, if I may, Russ, so um, PPW did look at this and um, i- i- and again, it's, it's not just for PPW. Obviously it's for, for the entire community. But uh, but really, it's, it's not ju- it's not just for the bike trail. That, that light has been, you know, just hazardous. Standalone, forget about the bike trail, putting the bike trail in, just it really reinforces this fact that we need to do it. And since we're already having it torn up and all that, we don't want to, you know, have to do something twice. And every time you have to touch something twice, it's just more expensive. It just makes more sense now if we're going to do a light and we're going to do the trail, let's do them together and, and have it make a little bit, it's more economical that way. Of course, two hundred thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money and uh, possibly we'll have a grant for it. But we also have a responsibility to take care of our infrastructure and that's part of our infrastructure. Everybody knows that that is just an absolute nightmare to turn left out of it, any, you know, any real time during the day. So um, it looked from the perspective of PPW, we looked at it, we tried to make it as attractive as possible, as unintrusive as possible. And uh, with all due respect to different, you know, folks with different opinions, I have to listen to traffic engineers. So that's kind of where we landed on this.
How many times have I turned left into the city here? Uh, you know, coming uh, left from Blue Star, go- going into Lake Street? And do I see that car just inching out to make that left-hand turn? They're, you know, they're practically into Blue Star because you can't see that left.
Yeah.
And how many times do I hear locals talking about, oh, I don't turn left there. You don't turn left there because you can't turn, you can't turn left there safely.
And had a bunch of tourists in the middle of the summer, they don't know where they're going.
At first, when I thought about the light, I was like, oh, yikes, don't stop anybody from coming into Sagatuck, you know? But uh, the more I think about it, the more I think this is something smart. Um, I know it's a big expense. Um, but when you talk about folks and how they're getting around town, that, that intersection is really a problem. Now, when they made that improvement, that yield that turns right, if, that was a nice improvement. I know that uh, our, uh, the, the flower shop, our, our van uh, had gotten in an accident before. They had that new right merged lane that they put in about two or three years ago or so. I can't remember. But that's been a big improvement. But um, I think, I think this is something that's needed at that intersection.
I, I, I agree with Councilman Muncy. Um, you know, uh, I think our, for me, our number one job is to, is to create infrastructure to keep our community safe. And um, so I, I'm very excited that we're actually going down this road to actually improve our city's infrastructure. I think it's absolutely critical, just as critical as making sure people have clean drinking water, make sure they're safe for motor vehicle accidents. I'm very excited about this.
I'm really looking forward to seeing the improvement in overall traffic flow in this area, especially considering the roundabout. People that obey the law in this area usually have, have an okay time, but there are so many cars doing sixty miles an hour around that corner. I'm hoping that slows it down because we'll still have a problem even slight if it's blinking during the winter with turning left at that intersection safely. I'm hoping that this, I think it's a good time to invest in this in combination with the roundabout. Could really, really affect how safe that area is.
And, and this is nothing I doubtless. You know, they had that intersection light there at Center Street. But look at all the traffic that we have coming into Sagatuck. You know, it, it kind of makes sense. It had that traffic light there.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just want to make it clear, Russ Gardner is not an anti-safety guy, okay? So, I just want to make it clear that I've got my financial hat on for this. And, you know, I've heard two hundred fifty, I've heard three hundred thousand dollars at the Parks and Public Works Committee was a figure that was thrown out. That's a tremendous amount of money for one intersection.
To be clear, PPW is not advocating that it's three hundred thousand dollars.
That, that's the number that was thrown out at one of the meetings. And I'm just saying, I've heard different, I've heard different numbers. So I just want to make it clear, Russ Gardner is not anti-safety at that corner. What I'm anti is making sure that we spend our money appropriately and that we have a good solution for this that may not be two hundred thousand dollars.
And I think that's smart. It's always good to look at, at the money. You're right about that. Um, uh, but you know, right now, we're just approving the plan, right? We're not approving the check to make it happen. We're just approving uh, uh, the plan right now, right?
Right. Yeah, that's, that's my understanding from our workshop on Wednesday as well.
Right.
And that's what the motion says. Okay.
If there's nothing else, then if Sarah could call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Uh, Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
And we are on to item fifteen D, proposal to provide architectural and engineering design bidding and construction administration services for the Mount Bald Head restroom building replacement. Man, we're getting some stuff done. This is on page one ninety in your packet.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Fleece and Vanderbrink proposal to, proposal to provide architectural and engineering design, bidding and construction administrative services for the Mount Bald Head restroom building replacement in the amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars.
I'll second.
All right, uh, Ryan, do you want to uh, set that up? I know it takes us a while to get through our, uh, page one ninety.
Yeah, maybe Sarah, if you could pull up page one ninety-four to show the rendering and uh, yep. And uh, yeah, you, you workedshopped uh, this as well last week and Mr. Moxie's here to answer any questions that you have. I think everybody's aware that the, the bathrooms at Mount Bald Head are definitely in need of uh, replacement. And uh, so approving this engineering proposal will, will move that, that rate along essentially kind of the same, hardly the same footprints, um, a little bit of a different design. Had to answer any questions?
Any questions for John? I know we talked about it for, at length at the workshop, but uh,
I, I appreciate, um, you know, the idea to mimic it, much like the pub house. And you know, then we also talked about the idea of having silent on it and maybe uh, area for pamphlets for the walking trails. But, but yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I followed up. Uh, I kind of captured all of the ideas from Wednesday and, and forwarded those on to the teams. They're ready to implement.
Wonderful, thank you.
We were talking loosely about anti-graffiti measures. I want to make sure that the city like thirty thousand dollars in that coating that we were talking about or something.
Is that how much it costs?
No, no.
No, I was going to say. But you'll see like the water filling station that is fantastic, especially because people are climbing Mount Bald Head right there. It's really fantastic.
Have them open year round because it can be heated.
Yeah.
Really, some, that is the gateway to that entire area, the crow's nest and all of that. And just to have something like that there, especially with the parking. I, it's a little long overdue and I'm really proud of the PPW for pulling it forward and, and bringing us to this point and, and continue to be elated with their work.
I, I know we've got money set aside for all these improvements, you know, that we're doing to our parks right now. But I, and, and then other things on the agenda items, uh, as well as the Oval Beach Pass. Um, I just hope folks know that that increase in their Oval Beach for their parking, uh, we are using uh, as good stewards. And we'll be making more improvements uh, to the Mount Bald Head Park as well as Oval Beach as well. So they'll be able to see right away, you know, some of the impacts of, of, of the increase.
Absolutely. Okay. Uh, if there's nothing else, Sarah, if you could, oh, there's more.
Yeah, just one comment. I'm going to um, mention a citizen by name, Vic Bella, has been asking me about this bathroom improvement. And Scott Herbert's nodding his head, has been asking about bathroom improvement at Mount Bald Head for several years. And I just wanted to say thanks, Vic, for kind of putting the pressure on me and then subsequently the city to get this done. So, well overdue. And, and I would also ask that simple and less is more in this situation. It's a very respectful place. And I think the less is more over there in meeting the needs of our, our visitors.
All right, Sarah, if you could call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item fifteen F, hardscaping in the right-of-way request.
Item E.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that because they look so much alike. Okay, so item fifteen E, proposal to provide engineering design and bidding services for Mount Bald Head Observation Platform Replacement. This is on page one ninety-seven.
You ready for a motion, Mayor?
Sure.
Mayor, I'll motion to approve the Fleece and Vanderbrink proposal to provide engineering design and bidding services for Mount Bald Head Observation Platform Replacement in the amount of twenty-four thousand six hundred dollars.
Second.
All right, now on to the discussion.
Yeah, 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 Madam Mayor, as I mentioned at the workshop, I think it's incredibly important for this to get out to the public in a way that people can give feedback on this easily. There's a lot of, as we know, there's just a lot of use of Mount Bald Head and a lot of interest in it, a lot of just rand- I, I've heard random things about the, about that over the years. And I think this is something where we really want to get it out in front of people and say, here's what we're proposing. Give us your ideas. Are there some uses or some thoughts that you may have about this? Like I mentioned, there was one citizen that said, hey, Russ, could we put a yoga or a, pardon me, a meditation space up there? No other way to do that. I don't know. So I think it's really important to get this out in front of the public in ways that they can give feedback on it easily. And um, kind of learn where the city's going on this. I fully support the project.
One of the, I, we talked about it Wednesday, but one of the reasons we didn't put construction phase services in here is we thought this might be a, a longer design process. Still not set in stone what, you know, it doesn't have to look exactly like this. But uh, that was kind of the thought process. I, I liked your idea on the, the sign too. We can have our marketing team help you come up with a, a graphic for, you know, a little political size sign or, or something up there just to, you know, coming soon. Start gathering ideas.
Playground with a QR code so that people can know months in advance and look at it.
I mean, the, like, when I look at this design, I think it's beautiful. My biggest concern is erosion control and having those items in place for erosion control.
For sure. That's my biggest concern going in as well. Yep.
Okay, anything else? All right, if Sarah could call the roll again. Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item fifteen F, hardscaping in right-of-way request. This is at eight sixty Simonsen, um, page two oh six in your packet. Ryan, would you like to set it up or would you like a motion?
Yeah, it's um, so yeah, another item that you discussed at your workshop meeting, uh, kind of the, the first uh, retroactive request that's come through to you with the new h- h- hardscaping policy and updates to your ordinance and, and really the, the ordinance uh, update and that the policy was kind of as a result of a couple of enforcement cases and this is, was one of them. So um, you discussed this at your uh, workshop, that there's a kind of a stone uh, wall that's, that's been installed uh, in the, the city right-of-way along Simonsen. Based on kind of some of that workshop feedback, uh, we've kind of provided some, bolstered some conditions to, to place on our approval. If you are interested in approving this this evening, uh, would actually limit the approval to a certain amount of years. And kind of make, you know, kind of add some clarity, uh, based on the, the feedback that, that you provided. With all of that though, it also makes your motion quite lengthy. So whoever, i- i- if somebody's interested in making a motion, then uh, there's a little bit of reading involved with this, this particular item.
So we talked, we talked a lot about this at uh, the workshop. So if anyone would like to make the motion, you know, there's two different ways we can go. Um, but I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Mayor, I will make a motion to deny the request from the owners of eight sixty Simonsen to allow the stone wall to remain in the Simonsen right-of-way.
I'm going to second that.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may. Actually, I'll let Russ go first.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Councilmember Baldwin. I, I walk through that area quite often and I've had a chance to talk with some of the neighbors. And actually, this property along with the two that bought it, uh, to the north and the south, the, to the north is a brand new property. And you can already begin to see that there's some landscaping beginning to take place. That's going to be in the public right-of-way. So, in my, in my opinion, Simonsen Drive is a very good area for people to park, to be able to go into town. And the other side of the road is um, already marked for no parking on the preserve side. And this hardscaping has definitely made it difficult for people to even think they can park there. There's been signs removed. So, having walked through there again and talking with some of the neighbors, I, I do not think it's appropriate to um, allow that stone wall to remain. And there's, there's properties to the north and south that have the same issue.
If I may, uh, I would echo those comments actually. I, I went there again today just to, just to look at it. It is well within the right-of-way. It looks very um, discouraging for anyone to park there. That's, it's, it's, I mean, it's like, I, I don't want to guess, I, I'm, but I would guess like twenty-five, thirty feet. If you look at where the, the fire, the fire hydrant is, it's just very disinhabitable to, for, for anyone to want to be able to park there. Across the street is no parking. We have to, we have to be consistent in how we apply rules. I have empathy for. We have to, we have to be consistent in how we apply rules. I have empathy for these people that bought it and it was like that. But at the same time, if you buy property, you should get a survey and, and know that this is clearly, and, and it, and it's done to my mind. I shouldn't say, I shouldn't presume a motive. It appears as though it was done to discourage parking. We live in a city, we live in a very populated city and people have, you know, people are going to park on your street. It's just the way that it is. And there's no parking on the other side. It is at the preserve. I'm sorry, but I, I, as much as I would like to, you know, help a citizen out, I just, I can't in good conscience say that we should break a rule for this one person, but then we're going to enforce it over on Park Street or whenever else we do it. I think that people need to go on notice that we're ready to have to reclaim our, our property. It's the city's responsibility. We owe it to our taxpayers.
Okay, anyone else? Just.
I was very, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I was very sympathetic with that, with the folks that had bought in this property just recently, within the last few years ago, I believe. And very sympathetic with them and knowing the area. But the more I understood, understood it and saw the parking there, you know, it, it is a little intrusive. I just want to say, you know, sorry, but shame on the folks who ever sold that property to them and, and didn't disclose that or that that survey wasn't disclosed that, hey, this is what you might have to do. You might put, have to push that back a little bit. Also, you know, and it makes no difference on my decision whatsoever. But I will say, you know, when it comes to something like this, when we have a resident that has something that's very important to them, that they think is very important to them, I would have liked to see more participation in this conversation from the property owner, which we really didn't have here. So.
And I, well frankly, I mean, yeah, Mr. President, so they, they were here, you know, when we were kind of discussing your ordinance. It's my mistake that I didn't let them know it was going to be on your workshop agenda. So that, that, that was my mistake. So I apologize for that. I see the homeowner is, is on, she's raising her hand if you want to hear from her now or, or have, you know, some sort of feedback from the owner.
You know, like I said, I was sympathetic, but you know, but, but you know, the more that I drove, the more that I checked out that area, the more I saw how intrusive it is, you know, to, to, to parking.
Now normally we, they would have been able to comment during public comment. Is this like, since this is their application, are they allowed to speak at this time?
I think that's at your discretion. Absolutely.
Okay, would you mind letting them speak?
Yeah, thank you very much. This is Sheila Dinman. We did not know that it was going to be discussed at the workshop or we would have been there. We, we live in Indiana. This is our second home. And I would have absolutely driven down for the workshop had I known it was on the agenda. Just found out just recently that there was going to be on the agenda for this evening, would have done the same thing for this evening. We would like you to consider what's going to happen when we take that stone wall down. That is going to be a mud pit there. That, that wall is holding back about a foot and a half of dirt that is just going to wash down into that area. And it's going to make it extremely unattractive. Our, our, our agenda was to keep that stone wall there to allow for parking, not to disrupt parking, but to encourage people to park. Otherwise, they're not going to want to park on our front lawn. I think what this does is it allows a parking area for people that do want to visit the park across the street.
Two years and nobody's parked there.
We've owned this property for two years and we yet have seen anybody needing to park there. That, that park is very underutilized, which is unfortunate because it's a beautiful park area. But we just purchased this property two years ago.
We've owned since 2010.
All right, is there anything more that you want to add or is there anyone who wants to ask any questions while she's online?
Well, I, I will say, you know, and you're right, there is a small, the way this picture is taken, it looks like there's a lot of room there, but not really enough room to park a car unless it's halfway on the road. And I know that because I, I hang out there. Sometimes you'll see me having a cigarette out in the park trying to hide away from the city.
I've seen you.
That used to be one of my hiding places, but, but I will say the last few years, that park is a lot more utilized than it was about five to 10 years ago. I see a lot more people there and cars parked in that area than I used to.
Go ahead. If you imagine us taking that wall down and landscaping that area so that it is a yard, they're certainly not going to park in our yard. At least now we've given them five feet of parking that goes into the street area.
And if you don't mind me saying, I, I did look at that and I thought, well, if, if you could just take that wall and build it back that those, those few feet, I think that would, you know, stop the dirt from coming down. I, I understood that point, but if that wall was just built back further a little bit, I, I think it would still, you know, keep that from falling down.
Okay, Sheila, I appreciate you being on for the call. Logan, did you have something?
Yeah, just, I think one thing and not that this is reflective of the current owners, but it, there was a piece of like government property that was destroyed in the process of this, which was providing instructions on the parking, which I think is kind of wild. And so that's probably why we're seeing less utilization of that parking because it doesn't look like parking.
Right.
Additionally, that fire hydrant set so far into that property is an issue.
Right.
And it is not, and this isn't a game of inches. I don't want it to seem like we're being kind of tiki-tacky here. This is 30 feet of, of property. It's a serious, serious kind of thing. So.
Oh, I.
Understand.
Can I speak?
Um, one more, one more comment and then we have to go into deliberations.
Okay, so if we take that out, you guys would require us to move it all the way back to where the prior owners had already built a fence? We're not going to do that. So that whole area you're looking at will be a nice mud pit. That's just going to wash down into the street. Because you're going to ask us to move it back so far that we've already got another river retaining wall. And so that will just be mud if that's where you want them to park.
Okay, thank you for your comments. All right.
If I can add one quick comment, the neighbor next to us is, has a bigger issue. They've got the waterfall in the same easement. They've got a waterfall and, and all kinds of landscaping. So I'm making an assumption that if this is the way this vote goes, it's going to go that way for them as well. And that's going to be a real eyesore for that corner property.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Go ahead, Holly.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think in, somebody made this point, all three of those houses are, I mean, especially the ones south of them and then the, the house that's being built, you know, are issues I, from, so.
Yeah, so the house to the north, I mean, obviously it's still under construction. You know, I, I've made him aware of the, the updated ordinance and policies. And so the, the types of, like he's planning on like grass and like things that are allowed by the policy essentially, flowers, that, that sort of thing. So he's not planning on any hardscaping or rock stone. In fact, that was originally the, the plans. And we, you know, had some discussions early on that we were kind of going through this process. So you won't see any actual hardscaping coming from that particular piece of property. Now, there may be nice, you know, vegetation and things like that that are, that your ordinance allows for, and your policy allows for grass and flowers and then things like that to be planted in that area. But none of that is kind of more hard stuff. So.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I would just echo that 860 has brought something to mind that we're all discussing this evening. And the property just to the south will have an issue with this. And this is going to be in the same vein. So I appreciate that the interim city manager has talked with the property to the north to notify them of that. But this is an area that will need to be addressed, including the south property.
Yeah, the, the southern property owner is working on their retroactive application as well. So.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, we can take a vote.
Anderson.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Muncie.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 15G, Oval Beach passes and the CVB. This is on page 213, Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The.
215. Oh, is it 213 or 2?
So as, as you know, you, you recently modified the, the Oval Beach fees and, and kind of took a, a look at that, at 2010 policy that, that kind of establishes, kind of outlines what cases, you know, what the levels of charges should be for residents. And there's a, there's a line in there that says any, all the complimentary Oval Beach parking permits have been discontinued at this time unless otherwise approved by the council. And so the, the CVB's submitted a request for five complimentary Oval Beach passes. They have a number of photographers and videographers that visit the area and take pictures and video of the beach. And so they're requesting some five passes to kind of accommodate those folks when they, they come.
Okay, is there a motion?
More of a question because we didn't get a chance to discuss this during the workshop. So the Oval Beach passes are adhered to the windshield. So would we not maybe look at having a situation where, and, and I support this because I think this is beneficial to the promotion of our community. Wouldn't we maybe issue some type of a special press pass or something or, or notify the, the ticket booth that there's going to be photographers coming in? And, you know, Lisa Mize can coordinate that with the, with the city and just.
Yeah.
Yes.
And his purpose, the city was giving out was kind of a, some modified version that the city clerk had developed that's specific to this purpose. So it'd be kind of giving out that, that same type of thing, but just for the CVB to use with their press.
So not a sticker pass, like a letter or something? Is that what you're?
Correct. It's like a, like a, something in Publisher or something like that that's designed. Yeah.
So a press. Dashboard.
Right.
You don't want to put a sticker, yeah.
It's really just a press pass.
Ignore some passes that aren't stickered because that's kind of a huge problem that we try to cut down on. So just maybe creating something a little more flexible or, or that kind of thing. Because I can see there, you know, the social media person needs to go out there and like get some shots and stuff and, you know, having that flexibility.
Yeah, this would be directly through the convention and visitors bureau. So it would only be those that they've approved. If somebody wants to do it on their own, that these would have to go through the convention and visitors bureau and we would, you know, come up with that pass.
Mayor, would you like an amended motion that's a little bit more clear that these are, you know, basically press access passes or something like that? Would that be helpful? I don't want folks to think we've created a precedent where the stickers are being given out just when people ask.
So yeah, it is for five complimentary passes through the convention and visitors bureau. If you want something more specific than that, you can ask for something more specific.
Unique, non-stickered or something?
I, I just, I think I would take out complimentary. I, I mean, I'll, I'll try something and we'll, we'll see how it flies with the council. Motion to approve the convention and visitors bureau request for five press passes for Oval Beach.
Second.
All right, any more discussion?
Just want to make sure Sarah's, Sarah's captured that. You, you, you good, Sarah? Okay. I'm in support of this. I just, I think we can make this far simpler and just have a, have a process by which when they have someone that's going to come into town to do, they just contact the city and then they notify the, the ticket booth or even if it's after hours and it doesn't matter. Just, I, I don't know why five passes would be the thing that we would approve. Just, we approve the process to do this. Yeah, I know, I know. It's, it's, it's not a big deal. I'm just playing off of what the interim city manager said that, you know, we, we're sort of in conflict with our policy.
I think the idea is that they would have passes that they can use whenever they need to use them. And so if it's like a photographer, a producer person, they have five people that they can get through there without.
Social media trailer.
Yeah, I mean, they could have, you know, like when Pure Michigan came, they had a lot of people and, you know.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to be clear to, that we're not, you know, just, you know, ask us for a free sticker.
Right. Yeah, I don't want this to be a habit either. You know, you know, other folks asking, you know, well, we're going to do this or we're going to do that for you.
Okay, so at this point, we have this motion.
No second.
Do we have a second on this motion? We do, I think you already seconded it. Helen seconded it already.
Sorry.
Okay, that's all right. We're still in discussion. If you want to change that, we do need to vote on that, the motion that's here.
I'd like to move forward just the five passes.
Okay, that sounds great.
Passes.
All right, so go ahead and just what Scott said, the five press passes.
Do you want to read it for the benefit of the council? Do you mind, Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay.
To approve the convention and bureau, visitors bureau request for five press passes for Oval Beach.
Good, okay. So you can take the role on that?
Anderson.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Muncie.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item 15H, special event, Fourth of July fireworks.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Fourth of July fireworks special event application.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right.
Sorry.
That was Dean.
That was Scott. Yeah.
The sample motion needs to be contingent about the fireworks vendor.
Yes, thank you. Contingent upon the, yes, thank you. amend the motion to approve the fireworks on July 5th special event application contingent upon the fireworks vendor and CVB listing the city as additional insured and an agreement formalizing the insurance arrangement being drafted and approved by city council. I'll again second that. Thank you.
And I, I can fill in a few gaps, I'm sure, on there for the reason for the motion. So in, in years past, Night Badger was the, the fireworks vendor and provider. And so as part of the insurance that they listed, you know, they listed the city as additional insured. You know, regardless of who was, was putting on the event and they actually essentially provided, you know, $10 million in liability insurance. As the CVB is, is, you know, taking this on and think, you know, thank you to the CVB for taking this task on this year and then working to have a, you know, a fireworks show for the Fourth of July. And trying to work through some, some of the differences in insurance with a, a different vendor. And so the, the fireworks vendor that they have is providing a million dollars in, in liability coverage. I've discussed, you know, with the CVB that I had some concerns with that amount because the city does, insurance does not cover fireworks displays. So we're dependent on the insurance that's, you know, you know, as we layered, you know, avoiding risk here. We're dependent on the, the, the insurance that's provided by others. And so in this case, the, the fireworks vendors willing to provide a million dollars, the CVB's willing to take on a, a policy for $2 million for all of the events that they really put on and also kind of would add on and fireworks related coverage if certain conditions are met. And then in talking with our insurance provider, if the fireworks vendor provides a million, then we can add on a, a million dollar kind of piece of protection at no additional cost to us. So we're kind of have a layered approach here. We have fireworks vendor that ideally would pay first, then the CVB's coverage and having the, the fireworks vendor and the CVB really indemnify the city. So that way hopefully it never really, you know, question of our insurance really doesn't come up. But if need be, it's there. And talking with City of the Village of Douglas and Lisa Mize that we've been working through this and our legal counsel, we think it's best to probably have a, an actual agreement, kind of laying all of this out and kind of how this insurance piece is going to work. So that's the reason for the request and, and layering things and asking for an agreement. Essentially, our legal counsel, there's a cost to, to creating this, right? And so it may take them, you know, three or four hour legal hours to put this together. So that'd be, you know, a little over a thousand dollars. You know, given that the, the donation request from the CVB was for $3,000 and we were budgeting $4,000 for, for next year. Assuming the council's okay with that, we would pay for that cost as kind of an additional contribution and making sure that we can get a show done with the proper agreements in place.
I'll just go on record as being a no on this for the same reasons that I was before. I won't belabor the points. Why I'm opposed to fireworks, just another example here. Insurance doesn't cover it. Why does it tell you? Adestrius, summer predicted. We could be in a lot of trouble lighting things on fire and setting them off into the woods, but you kids have fun.
And I share Helen's concern and, and also voted no before and well, and my main concern is just what fireworks do to our water. So, and animals.
I, I respect my colleagues' positions and, and I, I understand and I'm sympathetic. Sometimes though, you have to sort of, when you're elected to serve the public, I, I believe that the vast majority of the voters here do want.
I agree with that. And if I, if it was my vote that would turn it down, I would change my vote.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I.
It's a statement vote.
I understand, I understand the concern. I, I've mentioned it casually that, you know, I'm sure if we wanted to organize some boaters to try to pick up the debris the next day, I'm sure you, you'd find some willing volunteers to do that. I'm sure people do it anyway. You know, in terms of the emissions, I would certainly entertain either getting a donation or, or finding a way to fund an offset for the emissions. Yeah, I'm a member of the American Legion. They would gladly take a donation because PSTD and, and veterans is a real thing. And they would certainly welcome any donation for their work in that regard. So sometimes there are ways when you have things like this that you can try to offset the, the negative impacts. And I, and I respect my colleagues for, for bringing it up, but I'm going to be a yes on this because I do believe it is what the voters of Sagittar want.
All right, anyone else?
I, I respect my colleagues as well and I respect their respect for me when I say, I can't wait for fireworks again. But I, I do respect. Um, uh, but uh I, I do respect um a, an adult conversation in private and, and uh, in, in council about this. Um, uh, but we just don't see eye to eye on this one.
Bye, honey.
And, but, but I do understand where you're coming from. Um, and uh, but, but I have to agree with Scott, uh, uh, Scott Dean here. Um, you know, sometimes we represent most of what people want, whether, whether or not they be something that I feel real strong. So.
All right. Anyone else? All right, Sarah, you can take the roll.
Anderson.
No.
Baldwin.
Nope.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Muncie.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, moving on to item fifteen. Um, I, city council regular meeting date change. Um, our normal meeting falls on Memorial Day. So we're asking if we can make a date change. Um, I, as your mayor, uh, we had originally talked about Tuesday, but I would respectfully ask for either Wednesday or Thursday because my son will be in district baseball finals on that Tuesday. And I would prefer we could do it on either Wednesday or Thursday.
Uh, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the changing of city council regular meeting date from May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four to May twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four, that following Wednesday.
Second.
Um, is there, it, so is Wednesday the, I do, I have another board meeting that night. Is there a chance to do it another day?
Oh, okay.
Um, and if so, I'll, I'll just miss one of the meetings. I'll flip a coin. Um, is the twenty ninth the only day that works for everybody?
Because Thursday.
Thirty Thursday.
Thursday's gonna be rough on me.
And I'm nerdy, but I wanted to go to the Z B A meeting at the.
Okay.
The township, the township is going to have the dunes thing that day, but.
That's cool.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So this is a roll call vote for the twenty ninth would be the change.
Wednesday, May twenty ninth.
All right. Anderson.
Uh, yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Muncie.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
All right. Thanks everyone for that. Um, now on to public comment on anything you'd like to speak about. Anyone in the audience, you're welcome to come up to the podium. Just give us your name and where you live.
My name is Julie Leonati. I live at seven twelve Aligan. Uh, this is in regards to the airport property. I don't know what, how many weeks ago it was I sat in on a workshop meeting. And people came up and made suggestions of what they thought the best end use for this property was. And they were all worthy. You know, these people were all sincere. They're all worthy. But I said at the time, I don't see how you can make any decisions until you do a cost benefits analysis. Not a guess at what the property is worth, but what is the property's worth? And the professional who will tell you that will also tell you what the best end use for that property is. Now, I don't see when you're talking, I've heard you were talking about the, the pipes that have to be changed and all the problems that we have. And I've heard somebody say once that there's some seawalls that have to be changed, whatever. So you're looking at a lot of money that's going out. I think that the citizenry of the town should have input. Here are the challenges that face the community. We have to do this. We have to do that. And it's going to cost us X number of dollars. Then what do you want to do with the airport property? Do you want, does the citizen say, no, we should sell the property and take that money and apply it to other things? Or maybe they'll say, no, make a park. I don't have an answer for that. But I don't see how anybody can make a decision when we're talking about this kind of money. Heard a million dollars being bandied about. I don't know if that's an estimate. Some, I don't know who came up with that. No. But even if it was a million dollars, that fills a lot of potholes in this town. And it goes to a lot of other improvements that could be done. And I said, I don't think that this is something done behind closed doors. It should be left to the citizens to say, here, here are your options. This is what I think the taxpayer, this is what the taxpayers will voice their opinion on what is, what it should be done.
All right. Anyone else in the audience?
Leonard Young, Sagatuck Township, and I applaud whoever said, a thriving community does not sell green space, they protect it. And so thank you very much for your vote and your wise um decision on that. Um, lots of time for public input that was already there. So thank you very much. Um, I also wanted to thank whosoever idea it was in the beginning to start the P P W committee. Because I see on the agenda tonight and what has transpired over the last week, that there's a lot of things that have gotten done because of P P W. Some of these on here, you know, would have happened anyway, like the observation platform, but others like the playground and the um airport property um would have never come up. Um, I also want to mention um the involvement of people besides P P W in this. So the donor that came forward didn't just appear out of nowhere and say, hey, we want to fund the airport property. There was a lot of involvement of um, when we heard there was a donor putting together a list of potential things that they could fund, which I think was about seven or eight or nine potential projects, not just in Sagatuck, but the township and the surrounding areas. Um, and, and there was a lot of time spent with them explaining these projects, having them visit and actually taking them to see these projects. And that was the involvement of Riverwood Council. So I want to be sure that that's noted and everybody knows that this has occurred because of the Riverwood Council's input. And um, I'm glad that you could bring it to fruition. Um, one other thing, those donors, when they came forward, initially wanted to donate a hundred thousand. After we started talking to them and they visited the airport property, our next conversation was, hey, our donation has turned into three hundred thousand. So this airport property was a hundred and thirty. They are giving a hundred and fifty to a township project. That leaves $20,000 out there. I wouldn't leave it sitting on the table. Um, one thing, another project we, uh, so Ryan or Mr. Cummins and Mayor Stanton, um, I think it's in your court now and not mine to go back to them and, and maybe find out what could happen with that. One of the proposals was the observation platform. And I think I said before, they thought if the city needed a new platform, they should fund it. However, they were interested in um possibly enhancing that with some other ideas we had. So um, I think Kelly came up with the idea of um some scopes that you can see through or maybe some sculpture that could go there. And the donors did seem interested in that. So you might want to follow up. Thanks.
Thank you, Glenna.
Anyone else in the audience? All right. If no one else is in the audience, anyone online who wishes to speak, Lisa Mize, I see your hand.
Hello. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the council for the two things that you voted on tonight, the Oval Beach passes. And then also for the um, the Fourth of July special event package. I really appreciate it. We've been, we've been working long and hard on the um Fourth of July on the fireworks. Um, so I feel like we're really close. Appreciate your help.
Thanks, Lisa. Thanks for her, all your work on it. Uh, anyone else online who wishes to speak? I don't see anyone else. All right. Uh, you do have your correspondence there and now it's time for council comments. Uh, Logan, would you like to start tonight?
I have comments tonight. Um, I just want to point out that we're coming up on about, we're going to be coming out of this one month warning, I'm coming up on six months since our, since Holly and I joined the council. And also um, since we had our strategic planning session. Um, so I think something that I would like to see us do is reference that document possibly and uh kind of compare what we're doing against what we, you know, decided to do back then and kind of hold ourselves accountable on making sure that our priorities are being reflected in our work. Um, because we also, we should, we should have an honest check in on that so we can look at the next six months and say, hey, you know, where do we need to tighten things up a little bit? And that's my call for that. I will also, um, I'm going to bring it up again. Uh, our bathrooms downstairs are single stalls. Uh, they're gendered right now. I don't, I don't see the need for them to be gendered. I think they could just be bathrooms, uh, since there's only one person in there at a time. So I'd like to see small change in that too.
Great. Thanks, Logan. Uh, Gregory?
Well, he's always accusing me of stealing his thunder before he goes on. That was pretty good. Um, actually, um, uh, wanted to congratulate Erica June Bakery over at four forty nine Water Street, who just opened her new little bakery there. She's just been busy making cinnamon rolls and keeping that place stock. And congratulations to all the new businesses coming. We're looking forward to Saga Taco, which will be on Water Street. And uh, and also um, uh, was it last week or the week before Dustin finally closed down their building, the Singapore Room, which will have Asian food probably later this summer. So they're taking their time building that up. Also, real quick, the twelfth annual Sagatuck Douglas Community Armed Forces Day luncheon will be held this Saturday at eleven thirty at the Community Church of Douglas. That's May eighteenth. And uh, uh, where all veterans are invited. If any veterans listening or anyone's interested, you can purchase your, or I mean, you can RSVP. It's free. Uh, just give Chris Yoder a call at six one six two one two three four four three. We want to thank, of course, all of our veterans as we move towards Memorial Day, just two weeks away.
Gregory, thank you. Scott?
Thanks for mentioning that. And the um, American Legion will be out uh selling poppies uh at their normal spots in the coming uh days over by the pharmacy and over by the post office. So uh, please support them if you would. Um, what I would also like to do is I would like to wish Max Dean a happy birthday. She's over at Phil's right now celebrating. So if anybody wants to wish her a happy birthday, that's where you'll find her.
That's awesome. Thanks, Scott.
Ellen. Uh, so much to say, but I, I'll, I'll keep it brief. I know we all want to go home. Um, heart full of gratitude for the airport property approval tonight. I've been working on it so much and I'm trying not to be emotional while I thank everybody. And it's just, it's been a long journey and I'm, I'm very grateful and I, and I promise that you all will, it's, it's going to be fabulous. And, and that I'm very, I'm very grateful. Grateful to our volunteers for getting the playground pulled through. We've had some really hard wins, but they've been hard wins. And uh, and I'm grateful for that as well. I want to say thank you to everybody who made that possible. Thank you.
Okay, Russ?
No comment. Thank you.
Um, a couple of things. Mr. Leonati, I do have a valuation for the airport property. So if you find me, I can email it to you if I can get your email address. Um, Talmitch Woods, this was in the interim city managers report, but Talmitch Woods was designated a community forest by the Old Growth Forest Network. We don't quite qualify as an old forest, but there is a lot of old forest there. So that's pretty cool. Um, and then finally, uh, P P W's killing it. I mean, between, you know, um, Mount Bald Head, um, the airport property, Bridge Street, um, you know, the junk week, it's um, I am glad that the appreciation week is next week. It's well timed. So thank you to um, the volunteers and uh paid P P W team. We're lucky to have them all.
Okay. And at this point, uh, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Sure.
For the birthday celebration.
Yeah.